We're demolishing the existing bandstand, concrete pad and benches, which will save another 23,000.
Redirect that tree.
Yes, we did. Got a portion of it BG needs on that portion for free. That probably saved a couple grand, probably about three grand. Next big project we'll be working on is Christina's going to manage our website redesign. She's been gathering data and data and design ideas for our new website. Jim's been assisting with the graphic design. The new website will be more user friendly and ADA compliant because ours is out of compliance, our website we have now. And a preliminary meeting is planned with the vendor in the upcoming week. With our American Rescue Plan Act funding, our ARPA funding, we are preparing a bid proposal for our next ARPA funding project. The project consists of properly removing old asbestos cement water mains and services located along Gil Avenue and South Carroll Street. The awarded contractor will install new water mains, valves, hydrants and water services. We are utilizing this opportunity to improve the water system in this area by connecting the water mains on Gil Avenue and South Carroll Street with a water main installed along Shiloh Avenue. The existing water main that provides this connection will be abandoned in place because it is located on private residential properties without a legal easement. As of today-
Grandfather.
Grandfather did a lot. It goes through two separate properties, doesn't it, as it goes across?
Public Works, our lot, which is no problem.
Oh, yeah.
It goes across what was the substate with Silverado, and we can't find any legal easements for it.
So we'll just fix that. It's a good catch, Kevin. Good thing to correct while we're doing this work. So as of today, we've completed three projects with our ARPA funding. We have replaced the remainder of our 1936 water main and connections under Main Street Side Streets. The water main and service connections under Lower Becklessville, they have been replaced. Several fire hydrants in these areas were also replaced. And lastly, our Candy Cane Lane decorating contest. So the town held the second annual contest on Main, or last month, if I can get this out. Participation was limited on the residential side with three entries, so all three were declared winners and will receive gift cards from local businesses. However, the competition was strong on the business side with the eight properties entering the contest. Hampstead Auto Parks came in second with 227 likes on Facebook, while a Country Pup Pet Spa was the overall winner with 266 likes. Manor Time came in third. Post covering the decorating contest reached over 20,000 people on Facebook and received very positive feedback. This has become a very popular event in our town, and we hope to have more participants next year in it. Caused a little fun competition between the businesses. I think it was able to get some of the business owners connected that maybe didn't know each other before.
It's always, it's good to see that. Good to see the participation. Any more questions for Tammy? As you can hear, a lot going on beneath the surface, as usual. Oversights, Diane?
Hampstead Farmers Market Advisory Team met on January 4th. Market Manager Keith Johnson reported that he met with one of the representatives of Blue Ocean after their purchase of the North Carroll High School property was settled. He was happy to report that they are committed to allowing the farmers market to continue using the property. So we will be back at the Water Tower beginning June 4th through the last Saturday in September. The market will be accepting vendor applications through April 1st. The vendor fee for the season is $136, and that equates to $8 per week for 17 weeks. Vendors who require additional space can pay a flat surcharge of either $45 or $90 for the season, depending on how much more space they need. The market is requesting sponsorships to help toward operating and advertising costs. For a $250 sponsorship, your business will be advertised on the market website, promoted on the Facebook page, announced during market hours, and will throw in some other perks as a thank you. Lastly, the market is looking for volunteers to help with cleanup at noon throughout the season. We are reaching out to churches and nonprofits who would be willing to commit to one month. As a thank you, the market will make a donation to the church organization. Cleanup consists of taking down and putting away four or five canopy tents, folding tables and chairs in the seating areas, and moving the trash cans to the shed on site so public works can empty them. It only takes about 15 or 20 minutes with a small team of volunteers, but it's a tremendous help. If you would like to get involved, please send your contact information through the Facebook page or email HampsteadFarmersMarket@gmail.com, and our volunteer coordinator will respond to you. And as always, we appreciate all of the volunteers and sponsors that help us with the market throughout the year.
Can we reach out to some of the local Boy Scout, Cub Scouts, Girl Scouts?
Thank, yeah, we're looking into that, yeah.
I would think they'd be, if it's, pick a month, I would think they'd gladly do it. Wayne?
The Hampstead Trading Station is closed for the winter. We're working on bands for this coming season, and we're going to do it, go back to doing it twice a month, second and fourth Saturdays of the month.
Very good.
Okay. Tree Commission, we're working on our spring planting. That's all I have to report.
It's all right. Deb?
The Planning and Zoning Commission met on Wednesday, December 22nd, and approved a, the painting of gray and navy of an apartment building at 1326 North Main Street. Also, as Tammy had said, for the antique shop at 1152 South Main. It's called Mimosa's Vintage Company, and a sign was approved. They are hoping to open in February, and they will be painting as well from their chipped, current chipped white to a pale yellow.
What's Mimosa's what?
Mimosa's Vintage Company. Mimosa is the name of her dog.
It's also a name of a breakfast drink.
That's correct, but it was the name of her dog, so I did, I asked. They also approved the final plan of the Hampstead Volunteer Fire Department at 1341 North Main, which Tammy had stated they will start in the spring.
Is that it?
That's it.
All right, very good. Dave?
Okay, tonight, I'm going to cover the water as well for Ben tonight. But I just wanted to bring up one quick thing. December was busy, as you know. We did quite a bit, all of us up here were involved in quite a few things. But I just want to bring note, Santa's House on December 17th of this past year, Friday night, we actually did a collection, we were taking a collection for NISAP, pictures with Santa, and I was told that we set a record that night of donations. So I was very impressed. That was the most ever since that house has been there. So I want to thank the community and everybody for coming out for that, so that was awesome. Okay, so I'm going to do the water. December 2021, average water usage was 335,000 gallons per day. January 2022, average water usage so far is 334,000 gallons per day. Rainfall total December 2021 was 0.7. Rainfall total so far for January 2022 is 1.0. And then Kevin would like to make another announcement on the water.
So I know I come in here a lot and talk to you about needing money for various projects and whatnot, but I wanted to pass on some very interesting information to you tonight. I had the opportunity this week to do the semi-annual water withdrawal report that we send to MDE twice a year. And for 2021, we pumped 123 million 2,000 gallons of water over the entire year. So that averages out to about 337,000 gallons a day compared to 126, 184, and an average of 345 in 2020. But this is what is amazing, and it's proof that the work that we have done and accomplished is having real-life impact. Over a 10-year span, we have reduced our water usage by 19,614,000 gallons per year. Over a 20-year span, we've reduced it by 24,118,000 gallons a year. This has real-world implications. This is electric saved, this is chemical money saved, this is manpower hours saved, getting the water out of the ground, treated and sent on to our customers. And I just wanted to pass it on to you all, and it has enabled us to absorb this PFAS catastrophe where we've lost two of our wells without having undue restraints on our citizens. So if we would not have taken the measures to replace the water main on Main Street and all the side streets and all the infrastructure work that we've done over the last 10 years, we would be in a very different spot today. So I just wanted to pass that on to you guys.
Well done. So when's the MD going to let us off of the, what's the number they give for each dwelling unit per, 250?
No, that's a planning number. They're not changing it.
They ever going to let us off that planning number? Because we're well below it.
Well, one thing we have done is we've compiled a lot of compelling evidence that someday they may take a look at. It's, it is a national problem that it's discussed at every conference I go to. Water usage is down across the board. So it's a double-edged sword because we live off of our water rents, what people pay. So water usage is down across the board, across the country. It was down way before COVID ever hit. It has to do with our energy-saving appliances and just the manner in which we use water nowadays is totally different than 10, 15 years ago. This average that they've reported to you for December, 335,000 gallons per day, you have to go back to 1992 for a number that's lower than that. It's crazy. I started here in 1992, and it just amazes that we have, water usage has reduced, and a lot of it was waste, a lot of it was leak. The industry standard is anywhere between 10% or 15% loss per day is totally, totally okay. Well, we don't live by that here. We've got ours as a negative number, actually. So, and other good news, all the sample results are back for well 36. As soon as I get a clean Bactiste from the lab this week, well 36 will be going online. That brings 75 more gallons per minute to the system. So all the work that we did up there is finally paying off.
Well done. Congratulations. Thanks, Kev.
Thanks, Kevin.
Excellent news. Chief?
During the month of December, we investigated six reportable crashes, nine minor property damage-only crashes, and for the crashes took place 42 circles. Our speed signs were placed several locations for a total of 59 days of display. With reference to traffic enforcement, we conducted 18 selective enforcements over an eight-and-a-half-hour period. 13 citations, 13 warnings were issued. What's not noted in that part there, which should be brought out, is that activity also resulted in two DUI arrests. 60 citations were issued and 70 warnings in other traffic enforcement. We conducted 288 property checks on businesses and schools. Serious crime included six DUIs, two assaults, and three thefts. As a result of that activity, one juvenile was taken into custody for an assault. Six adults were charged with DUI. One adult was charged with failing to stop after a crash. Three adults were taken into custody for outstanding warrants they had, and one adult was charged with driving without a license. Training included 62 hours of training, that included annual firearms, and Officer Bachman completed an eight-day instructor school with the state. I'm sorry. Any of our instructors have to go through a basic instructor school to learn how to be a teacher, and then later on they go through a separate class that will teach them whatever this particular specialty is that they're going after. Matt Bachman, we hope to send him to Defensive Tactics Instructor School. He was actually scheduled to go earlier in the year, and we had a little bit of a problem with illness like everybody else has with so many different things, so hopefully we're able to get him in. We're scheduled to go in April, keep our fingers crossed. With reference to community events, at the annual shop with the cop, which I spoke a little bit about last week, I'm sorry, last month, rather. And the last thing I want to add on there, this is sort of an ad lib, an add-on, is with reference to approval we received from the state for our entry into the NIBR system. And what that basically is, it's short for the National Incident Based Reporting System. Every month we send you guys, included with this report that I go over, our annual, our monthly UCR stats. That's a Uniform Crime Reporting System that the FBI has had in place since the 60s, somewhere about there. Over the last, say, 10, 15 years, they have decided that they wanted to change the way that we report our stats, and they're much more in-depth. So for instance, we typically report an assault on the UCR. Well, now we report an assault, and whether the person was related to the person that assaulted them, whether there was alcohol or drugs involved, so much more data that they should be able to gain. And the idea behind that is ultimately, from a law enforcement perspective, a community perspective, we'll have more data that we can use. We probably, I guess we started about 18 months ago. Lieutenant Gaggar took the point on this. She went to I don't know how many weeks' worth of school. Several times she's pulled her hair out over this. It required us to basically teach all of our officers how to write reports in a different manner. I've walked through the office, myself included in this, and I've heard a lot of adjectives used to describe NIBRs. None of them, which I can share with you guys. But at the end of the process, we were put into a, I believe it was a six-month trial period, and we've completed that. Not all law enforcement agencies in Maryland have done so yet, but we received our notification two weeks ago, I believe it was, from the state that we've been approved, we're now in the NIBR system. Kudos to Stacy because it was a heck of a lot of work that went into that, and I'm proud of all the guys and all the additional work and aggravation they've gone into just to learn a new system. That's a big deal. Other than that, that's all I have.
Well done.
Thank you.
My report, Maryland General Assembly starts tomorrow. Normally, an election year, General Assembly is relatively benign. This year's not going to be the case. Apparently, there's several bills that are going to be moving through, which I'll give updates on, starting, I guess, next month. But one of the big ones is they're trying to push an environmental bill through. The Democratic Party in Maryland thinks they need that and they need something to show for the voters come November. But we need to keep an eye on it. You know, it's like California-like in its provisions, so we'll keep an eye on that. MML Legislative Committee, we kick it off tomorrow. I think that's largely going to be ceremonial, but you know, whatever the bills that have been prefilled, we'll be going through them. And then later this month, the MML Board will get together. Our longtime Executive Director of Maryland Municipal League, he started six months after I did, back in 1995, Scott Hancock, announced his retirement right after the New Year. So he'll, will be picking a successor, which will, that person would start likely in November of later this year. And I'll be, as far as I know, I'm on the committee that's going to help pick that person, so it'll be interesting to see of the people who are active in politics in Maryland who would like that job. So as always, just, you know, that's the update from the state level, I guess. All right. I don't think there's unfinished business on the new business. We did talk about the new parental leave policy and the change to the personnel policy manual. You have it in front of you, which will be in addition to Section 11. Judy, you want to give an update? Tammy?
Okay. Just the town of Hampstead, we, as many places, including the state, we don't have a maternal, a paternity leave policy. So typically, when someone has a baby and they're out, they use their own leave, or they go to short-term disability, which is how the state and most places handle that type of event. What has been new and upcoming is, it's not maternal, paternal, paternal leave.
Parental.
Parental, okay. Well, that's what we have, but what's new is, no, I can't-
Paternity.
Yes, thank you. So the person not having the baby can also take time off. So we decided to look at this, and Judy's worked really hard on this research, pulling off the state. What they have is to provide a parental leave, which covers, of course, the person having the baby and also the partner. So the state of Maryland has a policy that you are allowed six weeks of unpaid leave, similar to the Family Leave Act. But the town of Hampstead would like to take it one step farther and allow people to accumulate parental leave so they could have up to five weeks paid if they've been here six years.
So we, Chief brought this to my attention. We, you know, we're trying to attract young officers, and they, you know, they're going to be having families, and this is another arrow in our quiver of, you know, benefit that we can offer that I think we can afford. Is there a motion?
Or question?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, thank you. Next up is the approval of an engineering contract to HDR Engineering, Inc. for corrective actions to improve the water system efficiency. Kevin was talking about a lot of the efficiencies that we've had over the years, and then Larry Hens has had a big part of that, as helping set that agenda. And then this is an engineering firm that Larry actually works with. Basically, they're going to, we're talking to, you know, a number of things that are going on into the, into our system, which are pretty advanced issues when you look at them, and what we've got, and what we've got to deal with, and what our regulators, MDE in particular, require. And based on a lot of conversations we've had with Tammy, myself, Kevin, Larry, and others, the, it's pretty much that we need somebody that knows what they're doing, has the wherewithal behind them of a major national engineering company that can give us the expertise we need to go through these issues and to review anything that's basically put before us by a vendor, to make sure that, you know, we're not getting, for an example, a Level 4 solution to a Level 8 problem. So I think, you know, we're putting a limit of $20,000 on the engineering review services as that are needed, but I think, given what we're facing and the, just the tasks that we have at hand, this is an appropriate use of money to make sure that we're spending it appropriately, that we're getting the bang for the buck that we need as we make these improvements to our system.
But I thought, we also discussed, it's important to look at whatever solutions put in place, the maintenance cost in the future, because just something that's been around forever, nitrate removal, some of the, some of the suggestions are carbon filters which have to be disposed of a certain way, and you have a certain maintenance cost. So it's not just determining how to correct certain situations, but also what's the long-term cost of that, that solution.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the engineering contract to HDR Engineering.
Second. Take your pick. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Thank you. All right, now a little fun. So Councilman Unglesby's been involved in renovation of basically an historic candy counter from, you'll tell us the rest.
Yes.
So I'll let you do it. But it's good news.
It's good news, yes. I put together a little scrapbook of this, and I call it the Candy Counter from the journey from Main Street to the Town Hall. I'm just going to briefly read some of this, bullet points, I'm not going to bore you. But basically, I was talking to a couple people, and the old Dean's Restaurant was about to be torn down this past spring. I talked to a few people in town, and they told me that in the burned-out building, it may contain-
may contain a relic from Hampstead's past commercial district. The Dean's Restaurant had purchased many years ago wooden counter from the HR Lippi Penny Candy Store and had used it as a counter in the bar section of the restaurant. The building had been through a massive fire several years back and had been left in the elements for years. The new owners of the property were about to raise the building. I contacted the owners of the Dollar General and was given permission to try to salvage this piece of Hampstead's past before it was lost for good. Basically, um, I got a quick timeline, just so you can understand what this, this piece is over here. Um, there are actually two candy counters. Um, the one candy counter is the glass one, that was when you first went in the store and that's actually where jars were and, and a lot of things up front. That is now on display at the train station. This candy counter was actually on to the side of it, to the back, and I have a picture in here, which actually you can see it from, from back in the day. Uh, this was more used to shelve the larger boxes of candy and, and goods that were sold at the store. I believe that, uh, according to the Maryland Historic Trust, the building on 1216 Main Street in Hampstead was originally built for commercial use by HR Lippi around 125 of 1902, and he ran a store at this location in the early part of 20th century. After Mr. Lippi's death in 1931, his daughter and son ran the Penny Candy Store and it was in there to about the 1960s, 70s range. During the late 80s, the inside of the commercial place was so, all the fixtures were sold at auction. Glass counter went to the train station, Dean's bought this counter. This counter originally was, um, actually had a hutch that was built onto it and it was about as long as that, most of that wall section there. Most of it was damaged in the fire and rotted away, so basically I used the sawzall and cut out a good section of it that I could repair. Um, when the property, okay, so back to this, so now, when I got the, the fixture out, um, I actually had to get it put back together of cutting it. So I went to the Raver's Cabinets over on, um, Dana Avenue and Mr. Raver had, remember using, visiting this exact location when he was a young man, and he decided to help me glue it back together and put it back together and get it ready for staining. Started the staining process on this, it was approximately 25 hours of sanding and staining to get it back to where it was at. Um, and now it's, uh, ready to be set here and the mayor had suggested maybe to keep it on display here at the Town Hall. I thought that was a great idea. Um, also, it's underneath the picture of the downtown Main Street, and if you look at the red, uh, the building with the red brick with the blue top, that was the candy store at that time, so it's fitting that it's there. Um, one other neat thing I did was, um, I was able to find another glass candy jar that would have been in the, it was in Carroll County, an antique store. I wasn't able to get one from Lippi's, cause that's in a private collection now, but I did get that to go on top of the candy with some, uh, candy counter with some candy. So right now, we're gonna open it up.
Do you actually have candy in it?
Actually have candy in it. And it was candy from that era, not this old candy.
Oh. So no dub bars, okay, got it.
Councilman Unglesby, are you also gonna leave the book that you have with it?
I'm gonna leave this book.
Everybody wants to come by.
In the drawer here, which will say, that way people can walk through it and see what was done and have it all documented for us. Without further ado, the candy counter.
All right.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Wow, very nice.
Like I said, this is where the hutch sat on this section of it and went up, and that's where the bar where they had all their glasses. And this was actually in the Dean's era, it was used where they would mix the drinks right on here. This was severely damaged in here. This is all solid maple except for the one section, which was poplar. And over in this section, we had another glass case that was over here and that's why I left it this way, so that I didn't want to change from what it originally would have looked like. Um, all the, um, uh, brass was redone, I did that at home. The drawers are intact, it even has some of the old stickers still left in there from it. Keep this in here. And, uh, we did confirm that it was built around that time through Mr. Raver, because he said the track that's on this is actually made of just bent nails. They didn't even have metal tracks in those days. And there is no plywood in this, which again, we put it back in the early part of 20th century. It's all solid wood in the back. So, that, and then we got our drawers here along with the candy counter, candy jar. And I'm gonna give everybody a piece of candy if they so choose.
Sure.
That will make a hot week.
No. No.
If, if you don't want it, just donate it back, but this is, uh, candy sticks that were there at the time. Uh, they're called Gillian Candy Sticks, which I was understanding was there.
All right.
I found them on the internet, so. And if anyone else wants one, help yourself out with it.
Since 1927.
1927. So I figured this during the council meeting, if there are any needs in here, you can put this up here and if I can help themselves.
Oh, I like cherry.
And then if they want to, uh, learn about it.
Very good, Dave. Much appreciated, well done. Congratulations.
Thanks, Dave.
Thank you very much.
Good job, David.
Little piece, a little piece of history.
I'd like to say, for somebody that actually bought Penny Candy there as a child, I'm thrilled to see it's been done here.
Great, thank you.
Here you go.
Help yourself.
Here you go.
Oh, wow, good guess.
Nice.
All right, that's great. Other new business?
Nope.
All right, um, public comments? Do you have anything? Marlene?
Marlene Duffbox with Drive. I just noticed, comparing last month's agenda to this month's agenda, um, Juneteenth was not indicated here on the, um, change to personnel policy. And I was wondering if you all changed your mind on, uh...
No, no, I think we just, we were just taking one section at a time.
Oh, okay.
So like next, we're, the next one will be all the leave. We've already approved it, we just haven't, we haven't, like, we're gonna do the, look at the whole chapter.
This was just one piece of it, um, related to adding parental leave.
Right, but they've, uh...
They were together last month, I was just wondering.
Yeah, so they've already approved the two extra holidays. We finally got Veterans Day in Juneteenth.
All right. Other comment?
The property that the town has purchased, is that, is that, uh, something we gotta keep behind the scene or?
Yes. Yes, for right now, we do.
Okay.
So, but it's probably, well, let's see. We, it's an option, we'll, we'll, we'll reach out to them. I haven't done it because of the holidays, but, uh, it's not as pressing as it might have been, given the farmer's market is gonna stay where it is for the next year.
Okay.
That's what we were looking at, someplace to put that permanently where we control the land.
There's some changes with the restaurants in the area, is what I heard.
Changes? So make closings, openings, movings?
Yeah.
Yes, there's, I'm under, my understanding, one's considering moving from one location on Main Street to where Ricky's was, Cowboys and what's it called?
Rednecks.
Rednecks is now open down at Roberts Field Shopping Center. And then, what else am I missing?
I think for food, that's it, isn't it? I can't think of...
You hear anything else?
No.
I'm the last one to hear.
I was at CNN hours the other night, on Thursday night, it was packed, it was very impressive there.
Where was this?
CNN.
Yeah, okay.
You call it...
Cowboys and Rednecks.
It's for Cowboys and Rednecks.
I might not have went in there if I don't know.
Hey, we...
Next door, flapped aside, had a full house.
Good.
I don't know, they don't serve food, do they?
No.
Nope.
Is that on the sidewalk? It's packed inside, so I don't know what was going on.
Just beer and games.
Yeah.
So it's good, it's good, good beer. Um, yeah, they're, they're apparently so busy, they're, and, um, they need bigger space that they may be looking for a bigger space. So it's, that's good news. Um, it's good to see, you know, all of them seem to be busy, all of them seem to have their clientele and, uh, thank God, you know, with one exception, all of them survived COVID.
I'm impressed with the town officers and the people here compared to other towns up into those. They're still living in the 1800 range. You guys are progressive, looking out for the town people, appreciate it.
Oh, thanks, Doug, appreciate that. And thanks for just coming out on a, and Marlene too, for coming out on a 19-degree January night with a wind chill of what? I don't know, but much appreciated.
Don't get out of the house.
It's only so much of Tim you can take, right? All right. I'm sorry, we, we liking, he's, he's good. All right, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? And our, our thanks to the media center for once again recording us, uh, on, on this monthly basis and the, the remote nature of this and the way they've set it up and, uh, for those who join us on Facebook or see us on Channel 23, much appreciated. Thank you and good night. Good job, all.